Thank you very much, Annadale High School Singers. That was absolutely beautiful. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it's necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on October 20th, 2016, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Strauss, seconded by Ms. Corbett Sanders. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Hines, Palchek, Huff, Schultz, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Evans, McLaughlin. All those abstaining? Mr. Moon, Wilson, Darnett Kofax, and McElveen. Thank you. A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under "Upcoming School Board Meetings." The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select "School Board" from the full menu, then click on the "Watch Live" button on the School Board Meetings webpage. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. I call on Ms. Chu for the announcements.
Thank you, Chair. October 23rd to the 31st is National Red Ribbon Week. National Red Ribbon Week was established in memory of Enrique Camarena, a U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was killed in the line of duty while investigating a major drug cartel in Mexico. To honor his battle against illegal drugs, friends and neighbors began to wear red badges of satin, and some parents began to form coalitions. National Red Ribbon Week grew from these grassroots efforts to form a national movement against the use of legal drugs. Its annual campaign encourages students to take a visible stand against substance abuse and make a personal commitment to follow a drug-free lifestyle. In addition, November 2016 is Native American Heritage Month. Native American Heritage Month started in 1915 as American Indian Day by the Boy Scouts of America. Over the years, individual states recognized Native American Days, but it wasn't until 1990 that President George H.W. Bush designated November as Native American Heritage Month. Since 1994, a presidential proclamation has proclaimed the month to be Native American Heritage Month in honor of the significant contributions made by the first Americans to the settlement and growth of the United States. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. Our next item is 2.04 National Dyslexia Awareness Month Resolution. I call on Ms. Schultz for the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Dyslexia Awareness Month is this month in October. I have a resolution. Whereas dyslexia is a language-based learning disability that causes difficulties with specific language skills such as reading, writing, spelling, and word pronunciation, and whereas the onset and severity of dyslexia varies for each individual and impacts up to 15% to 20% of the population as a whole. And whereas literacy is a critical skill needed for educational success, and individuals with dyslexia benefit from effective teaching approaches that are multisensory, systematic, and explicit. And whereas Governor Terry McAuliffe has recognized October 2016 as Dyslexia Awareness Month in Virginia to acknowledge educators specializing in effective teaching strategies for individuals with dyslexia, and to celebrate the many achievements of adolescents, students, and adults with dyslexia. And whereas the Fairfax County Public Schools has instituted dyslexia awareness training for all elementary and secondary instructional staff and administrators. And whereas FCPS is implementing a plan to provide continued professional development to support school staff working with struggling readers and students with dyslexia. And whereas parents, educators, and students will benefit from increased awareness about the nature of dyslexia and the combination of strengths and difficulties that individuals with dyslexia can have, now therefore, the Fairfax County School Board recognizes October 2016 as Dyslexia Awareness Month and encourages all residents to learn more about dyslexia and to offer support to parents, educators, and individuals affected by dyslexia. I so move.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. McLaughlin. All those in favor, raise your hand. And that vote is unanimous. Ms. Schultz?
Yep. And I just, I want to offer a couple of words. One, two, FCPS as a whole, this is one of the things, the community of dyslexia awareness advocates working with some members of the School Board and with Dr. Garza, I think this is one of the things that I'm personally very, very proud of having worked with. The very first thing I had a private conversation with when Dr. Garza arrived, when I took her on a vehicle tour of my district, was dyslexia. And the impact that it can have on a day-to-day basis, on the long-term mental health and wellness of students who sometimes are profoundly brilliant but also profoundly hampered, and the frustration that educators may have, the ability for us to deliver more training, institute a screening process, and heighten everyone's awareness that it should not impede a student's success either academically or in life is something that I'm very, very grateful for. So, thank you. And so, we have, but, we're gonna have people come up and take a picture. Sorry to get in the middle of my story. Did you want to say anything with your second, Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you. Briefly, not only do I want to echo what Ms. Schultz said, but again, to all of the advocates, especially those of you here with us tonight, you are a wonderful example of how it takes a village to raise a child, and the time that so many of you have taken over the years to help our school system, the School Board, and the community understand the importance of dyslexia awareness. I just want to thank you as a parent, as a social worker, and as a School Board member. Your efforts matter each and every day, and you've helped us become a better school system for it. So, I hope you know how much we appreciate it.
At this time, I would like to invite the staff from the Department of Special Services and any parents and students who are here in support of dyslexia awareness to the dais for a picture with the Board.
Thank you very much, everyone. 2.05 Recognition of National Career Development Month, and I call on Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is recognition of National Career Development Month, November 2016. The distinction between recognition and resolution, such for the public, is that we don't vote on recognition, but it is as important as any resolution. And also, I want to thank those counselors who came out to College Fair on Sunday night at the Fair Oaks Mall, and Monday night at Hayfield Secondary, there were dozens and dozens of our high school counselors who came out not only to help out with the College Fair but also answer questions from many of the parents. I saw thousands of students, by the way, at the Fair Oaks Mall on Sunday night. It was great. November 2016 is National Career Development Month. Career Center specialists, school counselors, career experience specialists, employment and transition representatives, and career and transition teachers play unique roles in career development for students. With a focus on readiness for post-secondary endeavors, these educators are employed to help students explore and develop their abilities, interest, strength, and talents as they relate to further education and entry into the workforce. These educators collaborate with the parents to enhance academic and career planning for students. All educators in pre-K through 12 help students investigate skills, qualities, and academic opportunities that relate to career fields, encourage lifelong learning, and promote future readiness. Students explore careers and other post-secondary options through classroom instruction, the student learning plan, academic advising, and related activities. Through career exploration and development, students learn the skills and training necessary to be successful in future careers and achieve gainful employment and personal fulfillment. At this time, I would like to invite staff from the Instructional Services Development, and of course, counselors and career specialists, if you are out there, at the dais for a picture with the Board. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The next order of business is citizen participation. I do want to make an announcement that we have removed from the consent agenda tonight, item 4.08 Suicide Prevention Risk Assessment. That will now be on our agenda for November 3rd as an action item. I know several people have signed up to testify, and that's fine. We did have it on the agenda until recently. It was, the only reason that we've decided to take it off tonight's agenda is that we are going to be discussing that item and related elements at our Monday work session. So, people may still feel free to testify on it, but simply know that we're not going to be approving that tonight. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come out to speak tonight. Tonight, we have 10 citizens who have signed up to address the Board, and there is also one video testimony. Our first speaker tonight is Laura Burke, to be followed by Matthew Cosma, to be followed by Kathy Ruse. Ms. Burke?
Thank you. I am a parent, engineer, educator, and Fairfax County resident. Tonight's agenda included suicide prevention. Unfortunately, the gender regulations being considered by the School Board may significantly harm the mental health of many students. Absolutely no research shows this policy will actually help and not harm transgender students. We've heard in testimony before that even experts do not agree on how best to help them, and that many of them eventually accept their biological sex. We know that transgender people commit suicide at a high rate, even if fully enabled and encouraged to take harmful chemicals and undergo surgeries. Yet, the Board is considering a policy which forces shared private spaces on all students without reason to believe that this will benefit anyone, and with the preponderance of evidence that it will inflict tremendous harm. Not only are transgender students actually at risk from Policy 1450, but also the 99.97% of students who are not transgender will be forced to endure distressing situations. Shared private spaces will harm children who suffer from sexual abuse, who are much more numerous than transgender students, and who also experience high rates of suicide. No group of adults can pretend to care for students' mental health if they force girls, and 82% of these victims are female, to share with biological males private spaces where they must undress and become fully vulnerable. Also, the many other children who simply have a healthy sense of modesty nurtured by the Muslim, Jewish, and Christian religions, and Asian cultures, by human nature, and by concerned parents, will endure trauma and be encouraged to overcome an instinct for self-preservation and safety. The School Board has no baseline for measuring these harmful effects of Policy 1450 on either transgender students or the general population. This makes the entire policy an uncontrolled experiment on live humans without consent, which is illegal in Virginia and in all the United States. Children are not guinea pigs. We tell our children that no one should make them feel uncomfortable. Back in July, Board Member Ryan McElveen stated that he would be against a policy of a school name change if one person should feel uncomfortable. Why would he and other Board members not with heartfelt sincerity apply the same level of compassion to tens of thousands of students who may have objections to their use as human subjects without consent in this poorly conceived experiment? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm told Matthew Cosma is going to, has someone speaking for him, and that person hasn't arrived? Is that correct? All right. I'll skip over and come back to you then, Mr. Cosma. Kathy Ruse to be followed by Catherine Webster.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm a resident of Fairfax County. I'm a lawyer, and I'm also a mother of young children. My remarks tonight address the health risks to students in Fairfax County. Several doctors groups have written to you. These groups represent over 20,000 physicians and health professionals. They have written this board urging you to reconsider the regulations you have drafted to implement your policy supporting transgenderism in children. The letter quotes a growing community of physicians, mental health professionals, and academics who are supportive of gay rights and yet are critical of the youth transgender movement. Quote, "We are concerned about the current trend to quickly diagnose and affirm young people as transgender, often setting them down a path toward medical transition. We feel that unnecessary surgeries and/or hormonal treatments which have not been proven safe in the long term represent significant risks for young people. Policies that encourage either directly or indirectly such medical treatment for young people are highly suspect in our opinion." End quote. These are, this is the growing community of physicians and mental health professionals who support gay rights. This is from them. "Your proposed regulations constitute an indirect, if not a direct, encouragement of something that poses significant risks. Here I speak of your forcing all students and teachers to use opposite-sex pronouns for children with gender dysphoria. I speak of the affirmation teams, affirmation teams of public school teachers and other personnel who will help gender dysphoric students in their transitions. I speak of your plans to have biological boys attend girls' sex ed classes, shower in girls' showers, and play on girls' sports teams." This is what you say. What do the medical professionals say? Quote, "That it is fanciful to claim that a child with gender dysphoria is born with a brain that is the opposite sex of his body." Quote, "This is biologically impossible. Every cell of the human body contains identical copies of a person's sex chromosomes. Every infant boy is born with a brain imprinted by testosterone. Every infant girl is born with a brain imprinted by estrogen." In short, your policy and proposed regulations are based on little more than political propaganda masquerading as fact. You are playing gender politics with children, and it's not a fair fight." Thank you.
Catherine Webster to be followed by Kathy Mallard, to be followed by Sharon Fernandez.
Hello. My name is Catherine Weber, and I've been an educator for the past 25 years, teaching in both public and private schools. My remarks concern the subject of course offerings, particularly those in the family life education curricula. In my opinion, Fairfax County parents deserve answers to a number of questions. Why does FCPS so far exceed Virginia State requirements for FLE curriculum? Isn't there any other subject area that this time could be devoted to, given that there are so many interesting and wonderful things to learn about? Why are so many lessons age inappropriate? Do 4th grade boys really need to see 14 images of male genitalia in various states of arousal? Do 5th graders really need to be instructed in condom use? Or view a video of an animated erection? Why is anal sex mentioned 18 times in one lesson for 8th graders? Do 9th graders really need to be shown a video which includes a father raping his daughter? Why are these explicit materials showing up in lesson plans for younger and younger grades but are not mentioned on your webpage with curriculum details for FLE? Even savvy parents who know how to navigate to Blackboard will not find all the videos which are being shown to their children there, which may be a violation of state regulations. Why not? Why aren't they being shown these? Why is abstinence taught in a negative light as a loss of something rather than as a healthy and positive way and a gift to your future self and spouse? Why is abortion more thoroughly covered than adoption? Why does the curriculum promote teachers, the school, and government agencies as children's allies but not their parents? The parents are not portrayed as their allies. Many parents have been completely in the dark about the FLE curriculum, but flyers and word of mouth are making them aware, and when they find out, they feel taken advantage of, lied to, and conspired against. If you really respected parents, you would make sure they had all the information on these sensitive topics, and then ask if they want to opt their children in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kathy Mallard to be followed by Sharon Fernandez, to be followed by Meg Kilgannon.
Thank you. And I have the copies of my remarks here. I didn't give them out ahead of time.
Well, thank you. If you could provide those to the clerk, and she'll hand them out to us. And if you could start the time again, please.
Good evening, School Board Chairman, School Board Members, and Superintendent Garza. My name's Kathy Mallard. I'm the parent of a former FCPS student, a Fairfax County taxpayer, but most importantly, a citizen deeply concerned for the cultural and moral welfare of our county, our state, our exceptional country, and our innocent children and youth. I wish to address the topic of suicide among our nation's children and youth and look at some of the reasons that our young people decide to take their lives. According to the tragic statistics of the Center for Disease Control, suicide is the second-leading cause of death for children ages 10 to 24. More teenagers and young adults die from suicide than from cancer, heart disease, AIDS, birth defects, stroke, pneumonia, influenza, and chronic lung disease combined. So, it is a very important issue. Each day in our nation, an average of over 5,240 youth attempt suicide. There's a youth risk behavioral surveillance system. It's a survey conducted every two years by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. The purpose is to monitor priority health risks that contribute to the leading cause The purpose is to monitor priority health risks that contribute to the leading causes of death, disability, and social problems among youth in the United States. Some that indicate possible depression and/or suicidal ideation include risk behaviors and relationships that lead to unintentional injuries and violence, alcohol and other drug use, tobacco use, unhealthy dietary behaviors, inadequate physical activity, obesity, asthma, and of course, sexual behaviors and sexually transmitted diseases. As you will note, the survey doesn't look at some of the most important factors in the mental health of children, that is, family, family support, school culture, religious belief, and a faith in God. No child can escape the difficulties that life deals them, but from time -- and from time to time. But if a child does not have that strong family unit or an understanding of a just power, they will lose hope. I contend that the FCPS Family Life Education Program in its current state is contributing as a factor to child and teen depression and therefore, suicide ideation. The Family Life Education Program is not about family but rather about a sex life. It does not address the psychological impact of sexual intimacy or sex acts outside of marriage. It doesn't address the importance of love with sexual intimacy. My daughter had to learn in the seventh grade about oral sex, bestiality, masturbation, and something I wonder if you can define, fisting? Does anybody know what fisting is? I didn't. I know my time is up. I didn't talk fast enough, but I would commend to all of you to read this book. It should be mandatory reading because before you make one more decision about what we're teaching our children in sex education, not family life education, you need to know what Kinsey did and his colleagues in the Planned Parenthood Movement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sharon Fernandez to be followed by Meg Kilgannon, to be followed by Leigh Misca.
Good evening to you all. I am a Fairfax citizen. I'm a mother of three children who have graduated from the Fairfax County school system and I am a member of the clergy. And I'd like to make remarks toward the early Head Start in Early Family Childhood Education Program. The early Head Start in Early Childhood and Family Education Program offers a high-quality learning experience to low-income families with infants, toddlers, and pregnant women. It is common knowledge that these constituents face high risk of low achievement and underdevelopment because of family disruption and poor long-term outcomes. Head Start's goal, my understanding, is to expand schooling opportunities for these students so that they can start on the same level with their peers who are in a higher socio-economical demographic. But Head Start is also designed to offer structured opportunities for disadvantaged students to learn in a safe environment. But will these preschoolers enter a safe environment in Fairfax County Public Schools when boys and girls are permitted to use the same bathrooms at the same time? Or are these children getting Head Start into a greater confusion? These children, more so than many others, face great complications transitioning to a confusing, conflict-ridden adult world. Add it to this is the struggle that all children in early development face concerning their ever-changing bodies. Many of these issues resolve. My concern is that Policy 1450 will complicate these issues because it introduces the ideology of transgender, which has neither scientific or legal definition as of now. Therefore, it places a psychological burden upon these children, their parents, and their guardians to interpret what it means. This policy forces children to silently accept a preference that defies their basic human intuition to embrace the immutable biological distinctions between the male and female anatomy. Thus, this board values the opinions of all children to include those from low-income families. It's not clear if this is the case because Policy 1450 raises the concerns of the gender non-conforming students above everyone else's and allows a small percentage -- this small percentage of students to dictate what everyone else should do. At the same time, this policy endangers the privacy and sense of well-being of all students because, as I said earlier, now everyone has to wonder who's in the bathroom with them because boys and girls are or will be permitted to use the same bathrooms at the same time. In summary...
If you could just wrap up in a sentence or two.
Thank you. In summary, 1450 forces complicated societal conflicts on these students and families in favor of the gender conforming students and their families. Head Start kids really need extra help with the basics so they can come to school on a level playing field, so they can learn to succeed and break the cycle of poverty. But will policies like 1450 be too high of a price for our children to pay to get a Head Start? Thank you.
Thank you. Meg Kilgannon to be followed by Leigh Misca, to be followed by Amy Davis. Is it Rubacki?
Rubacki.
Rubacki. Thank you.
Good evening. I am here to speak about the Suicide Prevention Policy. And I went online to find out what the Suicide Prevention Policy is, and there's not really nothing there. There's this piece of paper with Policy 2 something XXX and outlines of material where things will be going, but the policy, I couldn't find the policy written. I wonder who's writing the policy? Are parents involved in crafting the policy? I would want whoever is writing this policy to make it clear to everyone in the Fairfax County school system that your first priority when you're confronted with a student who's deemed to be depressed or considering suicide, everyone's first instinct should be, "I've got to call the student's parents. We've got to get in touch with the parents. We've got to call the parents." That should be the first, very first thing on everyone's mind. It shouldn't be just lip service given because of a state requirement. Parents are the ones who love their children the most, who know them the best, and we appreciate your assistance in these kinds of things because you see things during the school day that we're not able to see, but we still have a right to know what is going on and we would be the first ones to be there to help our children. There'd be very rare and few exceptions to that. There was a case in Loudoun County last year where a boy reported to his friend that he was considering suicide and his friend reported it to the counselor. Because it wasn't a direct report from the boy, they didn't inform his parents and that young man did tragically take his life. I would hope that that would never, ever be the case here in Fairfax. I would hope that everyone, the parents, would be the first people to be informed. This board has recently made some policy, Policy 1450 that's been mentioned here tonight, where parents' views were given no consideration. That policy was rammed through very quickly under less-than-transparent circumstances. There was no community dialogue or discussion. And I fear that if you follow that model of policymaking, when you're talking about suicide prevention policy, you will make a mistake and it could cost a child their life. So I beg you to include parents in the policymaking process for the suicide prevention policy. And while you're at it, you could repeal 1450. That would make a lot of people happy, too. Thank you.
Leigh Misca.
My name is Leigh Misca and I'm here tonight because I would like to address the board regarding Agenda Item 6.02 regarding secondary course offerings. There are several new proposed course offerings such as Broadway Dance Theater, Hip-Hop, and Shakespeare that sound interesting. It seems these courses would provide opportunities to meet the changing demographics and interests of the students. However, after a recent experience with my son, I am concerned that we do not have sufficient regulations in place to ensure harmful and damaging supplemental materials are not used in different course offerings. School Board Regulation 3005.8 is designed to identify, evaluate, and approve program and supplemental instructional print material. Unfortunately, despite this regulation, there is new supplemental material being used which includes offensive language, violence, and explicit sexual situations, and this information is not being shared with parents as it is required in Regulation 3005.8. This year, this is the book my son brought home for his eighth-grade English curriculum. It's called Yaki Delgado Wants to Kick Your Ass. I'm sure, like me, I was a little bit caught off by such a provocative and inflammatory title. I read several reviews about the book, many which were positive, and the administration of our school further attested to the value of studying such a book because of the diverse Latin American female voice and the relevant topic of bullying. I was led to believe the message and literary content outweighed anything that may seem controversial, inappropriate, or harmful. I proceeded to read the entire book and was completely disgusted in the decision to use this in the eighth-grade English curriculum. I was prepared to read mature content, however, I found unbridled and prolific profanity, descriptive violence, and detailed sexual situations. Not only were these disturbing elements overlooked and deemed appropriate, the explicit sexual situations in the book were not disclosed to us as parents. In Regulation 3005.8, middle and high schools are required to provide a syllabus with a general statement that books may contain mature content including offensive language, violence, and/or implied or explicit sexual situations, and then in parentheses, it says "high school only." Why does it say "high school only"? Well, I assume that is because it implies material with sexual situations wouldn't even be considered at a younger age, at a middle school or an elementary school level. But according to my school administration, it says that no notice is required at all for middle and elementary school students, and that simply does not make sense to me. There is obviously poorly-written and unclear policy here that needs to be revisited and changed to clearly state what I'm sure you, as a school board, intended, which was to inform parents of any material to protect children of all ages from anything profane, pornographic, inappropriate, or harmful. In closing, before you, the board consider additional secondary course offerings. I would suggest the board first revisit Regulation 3005.8 and make the necessary changes to the policy to define clearly what is age-appropriate. And whenever there is offensive language, violence, and specifically implied or explicit sexual situations, parents should be notified in all instances and in all grade levels. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Amy Davis-Rubacki to be followed by Frederick Costello.
Hi there. My name's Amy Davis-Rubacki and I've been a pediatric nurse for over 30 years. I live in Reston. I have three children, all in Fairfax County Public Schools except for my middle child. My son is dyslexic, severely dyslexic. Thank you for your interest in dyslexia, Dr. Garza. He asked me to come tonight to tell his story and I said, "You know, they've heard your story before, Kaz. They've heard your story. Everybody knows. The research is out. Dr. Sheaowitz is on it. Yale's going to pull through. People are going to start to educate, advocate, and legislate." So what I'm asking for as a nurse, for years I've gone into the elementary schools to do vision and hearing screening. Anyone can go in. You don't have to be a nurse. And the kindergartners come through and they're so cute. And it's just a simple screening. It's not a diagnosis. It's just, wow, they can't hear any of us, or that child can't see the apple on the wall. And a note goes to the parent that just flags them. Please have this evaluated. It's not a diagnosis. What I'm asking is for you to consider, would it be possible in the future for young children in kindergarten to be screened for dyslexia? It's very straightforward. There's like five bullet points. You could do it when they get their vision and hearing done anyway, and then check them again at the end of second grade. Because as you know more than I do, from kindergarten to second grade, we learn to read. From second grade on, we read to learn. So I have been an at-home parent for 15 years. I've been with my little boy every second. I had no idea what I was looking for. It took me until he was seven to figure it out. He's not in Fairfax County anymore, which is not a dig, it's just a fact. They couldn't help him. So he's at the Oakwood School and when he left in third grade, Fairfax County, his DRA level was a three. He was eight years old. In three and a half years at Oakwood, his DRA is a 40, and he's rocking it. So please consider screening the little ones. Early intervention is absolutely essential. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Frederick Costello.
My name is Fred Costello. I'm actually a rocket scientist, so I don't fit in. My grandchildren will all go to Fairfax County Public Schools. You're to be commended for trying to prevent suicides. The increase of rate of suicides, especially among LGBT people, is alarming. You face an almost insurmountable problem. Okay? If life gets difficult, why not terminate it? You might try to dissuade people from suicide by calling them names such as cowards and selfish, okay? Which is what I see on the internet as how you dissuade people from suicides, okay? In fact, the names could increase the stress and make it worse. You need a sound, logical basis, okay? And of no other basis than that there is a life after death, okay? I was taught as a kid, and after that even, that if I committed suicide, unless I was crazy, I'd go to hell. That's a good deterrent, I'll tell you. And so that was never part of my thinking, okay? But you've excluded such talk from the schools. So you've taken away the number-one deterrent from them. Instead, you're going to call them names, okay? You've also exacerbated the problem with the FLE program, which teaches that LGBT practices are normal and healthy. Such teachings will cause more people to join these practices, which will lead to even higher suicide rates because the suicide rate among LGBT people is greater. So I urge you first to add the talk about God and life after death to the FLE program. And they do that and meet the laws, okay? And then devise the program to minimize experimentation by the students in the LGBT lifestyle. Okay? To the extent that you're personally responsible for the FLE program, you're responsible, you will be responsible for the increase in suicides. Think of that. If you'd like to know why there's a life after death is essential to suicide prevention, I'd be happy to meet with you and explain the connection. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to Matthew Cosma. Mr. Cosma, are you prepared to testify? All right. In that case, we did have a speaker who wanted to take that slot. Mr. Becerra, are you here? George Becerra? All right. Well, if Mr. Becerra isn't here...
He has a substitute.
Oh, you have a substitute, Mr. Albert? All right. Certainly, go ahead and...
I'm George Albert. Hi, I'm George Albert. I have the unique privilege of filling in for George Becerra tonight. So I'm going to read his, what he left to speak about. So, good evening, Dr. Garza and board members. I want to congratulate you all on posting yesterday the new position of Assistant Superintendent for Education Equity and Innovation. I would especially, George would especially like to thank Mrs. McLaughlin for being a champion for this position and more importantly, for advocating for the creation of an Office of Equity. In regards to the job posting itself, I have four questions or comments. First, where is equity and innovation defined in the strategic plan as you reference in line two under the job description? If you wrote in the job description to implement the division's strategic plan in accordance with the one Fairfax resolution, I could agree with that. Next, the closing date. Why is the job closing date October 19th, 2017? Forgive my ignorance, is this a common practice of a one-year deadline for any position except for superintendent? Or is this person not actually going to be hired until the new superintendent comes in? If this is the case, then I have to hope the new superintendent is in agreement with this new position in the office. Or is the closing date referring to when the new hire will start the position? If that is the case, why such a long-delayed start date? Third, I think this is really important. Where is the Assistant Superintendent to be placed in the work chart? Early indications from you is that this position will be under the Chief of Staff. From reading your responsibilities on your webpage, shouldn't this new position be under the Chief Academic Officer? Isn't the CAO responsible for instruction and in particular, for closing achievement gaps? Fourth, I hope this job announcement garners applications from personnel from other school districts that have had an Office of Equity or similar-type function for years like Dallas or Chicago. This would be helpful in starting this new office and immediately implementing best practices, therefore not starting from scratch. Again... Again, I'd like to thank the superintendent and school board on the very first good step in announcing this job position. Now, I do have a statement I'd like to make on my own behalf, if I may. And it's a very simple one.
Go ahead.
Very simple one. And it's not what you think it is. October is also National Disability Employment Awareness Month, which is a very, for those of you who don't know, I do, for past several years, I've been doing consulting in for not-for-profits who work with people who are visually impaired. And education and training is extremely important for them to lead full, normal lives, which they can. So I would, I should've brought this up sooner, but I hope next year we can think about National Disability Employment Month. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one video testimony from Kevin Nie, and just so members of the audience know, you can see the video here, we do have screens in front of us, so we'll be watching it straight ahead, if you would.
Hello, guys. My name's Kevin, and I'm in fourth grade FCPS School, HEBW. I'm gonna be ten years old. My birthday is October tenth, twentieth, which is Thursday, and yeah, two thousand sixteen. And today we'll talk about Fairfax County Purchasing Resolution, FCPR. Our Fairfax County Purchasing Resolution. The Fairfax County Public School Board shall be responsible for construction-related architectural and engineering service, services, related consulting services, maintenance, repair, and related services in connection with building, furnishing, equipping, renovating, containing, and operating the buildings and the property of the school division in accordance with twenty-two, line one to seventy-nine, Dakota, Virginia. This is my playground, our school's playground, that burned down. Greenbrier West, West, Greenbrier West Elementary School Playground Fire, literally. They burned it. Awkward science. And now it's all hay, all the equipment's gone, flag around, here's hay, everything's buried down on the ground, and people are playing on it. Play other things than the playground. So the playground's gone, we go play other things. For instance, all students have to play indoor or outdoor, because we're in the trailers, we're the only classes that can do that, so we're lucky. Indoor, we play a lot of things like Lego, baseballs, cars. We do a site called Dreambox, has a fun, light, math site, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And for outdoor, we can basically play basketball. And I made a game with my friend called Keep Away, Keep Away, Two Teams, and me, my friend Uncle are masters of it. Then we stopped playing with the play cards, and yeah. Well, guys, have a great night. Bye-bye.
All right, and that was student Kevin Nie. We now turn to three point zero two, Student Representative Matters, and I call on Ms. Chu.
First of all, if you're watching out there, Kevin, thank you so much for that video. We enjoyed it a lot. First, I'd just like to reach out to the young voters. I believe a handful of seniors who are already eighteen will be eligible to vote very soon. And to this handful of voters, I'd just like to remind you to please stay informed about the Mills Tax Referendum. At the general election, you will have the opportunity to vote on this Mills Tax Referendum, and please remember that voting is a civic responsibility, and as you are now eighteen, the Mills Tax Referendum will be affecting you and your families in the future, and you can play a big role in what happens. In addition, we had another superintendent-student advisory council meeting today, where we continued to discuss the issues of mental health and wellness at our schools, school environment, and general well-being of our students. With our students, we kind of came down to a short definition of what mental health is that I'd just like to share with all the students, and that is that mental health is the state of your mental well-being and your ability to cope when you're in a conflict. So I'd really encourage any teens, parents, or other community members who are interested in learning more to attend our October twenty-ninth Mental Health and Wellness Conference at Fairfax High School. The superintendent-student advisory council is working hard to help students cope with their mental health illnesses and learn more about mental health, and I hope you can take this opportunity to learn more at this conference as well. In addition, to no surprise, our students continue to excel, and I'm very excited to announce that there were forty-two semifinalists within Fairfax County in the Siemens Competition in Math, Science, and Technology. This is a very high number in comparison to other states, and I'd just like to congratulate all the students out there and thank them for continuing their pursuit in STEM. That's all I have for today.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. We turn to item three point zero three, Economic Impact Study Report, and I'm going to call on Dr. Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. When the board adopted the strategic plan in the summer of two thousand fifteen, under the Goal for Resource Stewardship Report, there was an overarching strategy with an action item that stated, "Conduct a study to determine the economic impact of FCPS on Fairfax County as a whole." So in the spring, in the summer of two thousand fifteen, this was included in our strategic plan. So it's something that we have been striving to get completed, because we knew that it was important, as a part of our strategic plan, to demonstrate that our fiscal responsibility and demonstrate that we're strong. We take that responsibility of being effective stewards of the taxpayer dollars very seriously, and that was represented, I think, in the strategic plan quite well. I think it's also obvious that our first and foremost responsibility is the care of children and students, and the teaching and learning that goes on in our system, but we do take seriously, like I said, our ability to show that we're strong stewards of the taxpayer dollar. So we were very fortunate to have someone in our community who's an expert at this kind of work, so we called upon Dr. Fuller. Dr. Fuller conducted the Economic Impact Study. Dr. Stephen Fuller is the Dwight Skir faculty chair and university professor, and a senior advisor and director for special projects for the Center for Regional Analysis at George Mason University in Arlington, Virginia. We also researched for quite a number of other school systems around us who've done similar economic analysis and study and found that work very beneficial. I hope you've all had a chance to read the study. We've had it out for a little while, and we felt like it'd be beneficial for Dr. Fuller to be here to answer questions for the board. So, Dr. Fuller, it gives us a great pleasure to welcome you here tonight, so we look forward to your presentation.
Welcome, Dr. Fuller.
Thank you very much. Quite a set of presentations this evening, so I haven't been in a middle school for a long time. I'd like to also congratulate you on your dyslexia. I'm dyslexic, and nobody knew it. When I was in grade school in the nineteen forty-five, nineteen fifty period, I was fifteen years old before anybody knew how to deal with it, and two teachers really saved me, got me going, an English teacher and a Spanish teacher in high school. So it is so important, and so I congratulate you for your emphasis here on that tonight and in the program.
Yes, thank you for that testimony, that's...
Well, you learn how to work around it, and people do, and reading is still a problem. So I won't read anything tonight. I have slides. So I was excited about this assignment. I think it's an important story. The answers are fairly straightforward, there are not very many of them. I think it's important for taxpayers and citizens, parents, to understand that the school system is, in addition to what it's designed to do, and how important that is, in supporting the workforce and economy of the county and educating its young people to have productive jobs, it's also a business. And when you say education's a business, people think that, well, that's sort of, that isn't the way we really wanna think about it. But it, when you look at your budget, three billion dollars, it is a business, and the impact of that money being spent has consequences, has additional impacts within the community a lot of people don't pay attention to. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about what those are tonight, and see if I can make this. There we go. So I'm gonna give you the answers first. You've seen these, I suspect, but let me just summarize them. The roughly three billion dollar budget for this fiscal year is the starting point, and out of that budget, sixty-two percent, I found, was spent in the county, one point eight five billion dollars. One point one five billion of that was payroll spent in the county. Those are the drivers of the analysis. As that money is spent in the county, it generates additional economic activity, and when that's toted up, it added up to, and we're only focusing on that gets, that which gets spent in the county, two point two billion dollars. It's a really big economy. This is the second biggest economy in the Washington metropolitan area. Only the District of Columbia is bigger, but this is a much broader-based economy, much more diverse economy. This spending, the two point two billion dollars, two percent of the economy, two percent doesn't sound big. In fact, it's really not anything bigger. No private corporation in Fairfax equals one percent. And so while two percent doesn't sound big, it's second to the federal government, and federal government is employment as well as procurement, as measured by the work done here in this county. Another impact which is important is the additional earnings that it generates for non-Fairfax County public school employees. As you have read, and I will just put that up there, in addition to the twenty-seven thousand two hundred full and part-time employees of the public school system, there are non-employees who are benefit, who benefit from this spending. And these aren't just the contractors, these are people on Main Street. This is where these beneficiaries are the shopkeepers, or the employees of stores where Fairfax County schoolteachers shop, and, or where the school, public schools buys its equipment or its supplies. And so there's a broad base of impacts. They show up as, as the GDP kind of impact, gross domestic product, but there's a gross county product equivalent. It shows up as additional earnings beyond the payroll, the one point one five billion in payroll, and it shows up as jobs. So that's sort of, all of the analyses go to produce those few numbers. Now, it's, I think it's important to also think about, well, what are we really talking about here? It's unique activity generated by, in this case, the FY two thousand seventeen budgeted spending by the county. So it is looking forward across the fiscal year, these are the impacts that would be achieved as the budget, budgeted outlays are spent during the fiscal year. It includes operating outlays and capital outlays, and you know the budget, you struggle over it, and has lots of parts. Each one of those parts is fairly important, because they have different impacts. Utilities have a different economic impact than the purchases of, or construction activity or repair and maintenance, or the whole activity of teaching, which is your principal business. So the economic activity that, or the new economic activities for this fiscal year, which we can measure by looking through your budget, and then tracing how those roll through the economy, the Fairfax County economy, and then toting that up. And the way I look at it, if you didn't spend that money within the county, what would the county miss? What wouldn't it achieve? And so it's, it's only those activities and those benefits that can be directly tied to the fact that this money was spent, and it was captured within the county. It could've been spent and captured in Maryland, or Spasovania County. It's, it's the ability to service a significant percentage of the school activities as funded in the budget satisfy those within the local economy. It's quite unusual for most jurisdictions. Arlington is too small. Most of its teachers don't live in Arlington. Most of your teachers live in Fairfax, so it's, it's really, two-thirds of them, it's really quite an important and impressive percentage. So how do you measure it? Dollars and cents. And it comes out, we worked through all of your categories of spending, and then evaluating each one of those as it, as it impacts the local economy. Is the work done here? Are the people doing the work living here? And how much of that money is captured within the local economy? So, so, let me get this to work again. There we go. The way you factor up this direct spending is the use of multipliers. They're not magical, they are calculated for every jurisdiction in the United States by the U.S. Department of Commerce, Bureau of Economic Analysis. They're updated periodically. The most recent update was in, was a year ago this time. And what these numbers represent is the, on the total output column that you have there on the left, that is the factor by which you would might, you would multiply the spending in a category. So for payroll spending, for every dollar of payroll spending, there's the one dollar that is, comes out of your budget, and there's forty-three and some little extra change there, cents of additional benefits that are required. It doesn't sound big, but, but when you think about payroll, taxes come off right, right off the top. Actually, they're withheld, and so you don't get all of your payroll, and you probably contribute something to health benefits and to your 401K, and so your take-home pay is considerably less. And it isn't just local taxes and state taxes, federal taxes too. So what is actually available to spend, once you look at the payroll number, is much less. So there is leakages, and Fairfax County residents or teachers don't do all their spending in Fairfax County. So there's leakages from this, and people expect these multipliers to be much bigger. This isn't bad, though. It does say that for every dollar you spend, you get something in addition to that dollar. You get the dollar plus. It also throws off some personal earnings. These are earnings for jobs that aren't Fairfax County public school jobs. These are jobs that are elsewhere in the county. For payroll spending, it's only twenty-four cents of every dollar spent ends up as new earnings for non-school system employees. And then it supports jobs. So there are jobs multiplier. The key factor in these multipliers is that they're bigger if the geography is larger, meaning that you have a bigger jurisdiction and you have a larger, more complicated economy, so you're better able to service the system's needs. These multipliers drive the analysis. So what do you put into the model? Well, these are your numbers, and you can, you know them, but just to summarize them, you can see by running down the top, your total budget, the portion of that that's capital outlays, the portion of the, that are operations, and these are your totals, these aren't the county totals, and then the employment implications of that. So most important...
Excuse me, Dr. Fuller, if you don't mind, I don't, I hate to interrupt, but this is an important presentation. Can you all take the conversation outside, please? Thank you.
Thank you. I found it quite interesting that of your contract work, although it's not a large part of your budget, that the majority of it, just a little bit more than the majority, fifty-one and a half percent of it, was done by either companies or individuals doing their work here in the county. Doesn't mean that they're headquartered in the county necessarily, but the work was done here and the spending occurred here. So even there, there wasn't significant leakage, but it's the two-thirds of the workforce, the school system's workforce that is resident, which was quite important, I think. And then Virginia captures almost all of it. The bottom, almost down there near the bottom, ninety-four point five percent of the FCPS's workforce resides in Virginia. So as, when you analyze this, as I did, both for the county and for the Commonwealth, to be able to look at the bigger picture and how much of these funds are retained. So all of that just goes to this simple little chart, all the answers there, you can see the total outlays totaling up to almost three billion dollars. The portions of those that get retained, sixty-two percent of all of your spending this year will... this year will end up in the county before any multiplier is added to it. That's just the direct funding. Eighty-eight percent of it ends up in the state, which includes the county. So it's, it's inclusive of Fairfax County. And then the, the total output of that, two point two billion dollars, or four billion at the state level. And this money stays here. I look at this and the personal earnings as well, for more than four hundred million dollars of earnings generated by your spending within the state, eight hundred million within the state. That's all taxable income. So not only are you creating jobs and wealth earnings, personal earnings, hardly any of this escapes taxing. So at some level, this, these monies revolve and continue to circulate. Thirteen thousand jobs beyond the twenty-seven thousand two hundred jobs that are in your budget. There's another thirteen thousand jobs that aren't in your budget that owe their payroll to your spending. So your, your reach is quite large. And when we think of the, the, the total effects again, just to remind you, it's really quite simple. Your budget, if somebody asks you, well, where does all that money go? Sixty-two percent of it stays right in the county. That may not sound like, like enough, but it probably is better than any company in the county or any business. Because jurisdictional boundaries don't mean too much to private businesses. They work regional markets in national and globally. You're, you're very introverted in this, this context. The two point two billion, as I said, was two percent of your total economy, second to the federal government. As an employer, you're the largest employer in the county, bigger than the federal government, bigger than any other government, bigger than the rest of the county government. And, and, and if you, that's four point one percent of all of the, the jobs in the county are, are on your payroll. And if you add the other jobs, it's five point three percent. So being, having five percent, five point three of all, percent of all of the jobs in the county is pretty impressive. And, and, well, let's just go move this along. And you can see that the numbers that I suggested, I think what, what differentiates you from other major employers or businesses is that your benefits are very broadly distributed. And it's partly largely because they are predominantly payroll. You're, you're a human resource business. And while you buy, you maintain a lot of buildings and buy a lot of products, the payroll portion of your budget is, is the largest and it gets spent everywhere. And so it supports the housing industry, it supports the transportation sector, certainly supports retail and consumer services. The, and so I conclude with this that, that Fairfax County public schools are a major economic force, not only because of the magnitude of the spending because, but because of the breadth of the spending and its impact on the local economy. And it comes down to retention of earnings and the turning over those earnings within the economy, creating other jobs. I did a project like this for Montgomery County, Maryland, a year or so ago. And they had a much greater leakage of benefits, much smaller percentage of their workforce lived within the county. And so they measured them at the state level. They, of course, they were, they wanted to appeal to the state for more support, but the impacts were much more impressive at the state level where Fairfax County is the engine of the region. That helps explain why it comes out and captures such a great percentage of the benefits. So that's my presentation. I wish it were more exciting.
Well, that's, that's exciting enough, Dr. Fuller.
These are very good numbers.
We, we very much appreciate you coming and presenting to us. And I know that there are several board members who had questions and comments for you. I'm going to start with Mrs. Schultz.
So first of all, thank you for your kind comments at the beginning and, and being willing to share that we're doing some good stuff in non-economic impacts with our dyslexia work. I had a couple of questions based on a few of the statements that were either in the summary or extemporaneously a part of the presentation. You said that, and I, I'm sorry, the slides aren't numbered, so I don't know, but there's a slide that says one point one five billion, and that's sixty-seven percent, stays in Fairfax County because of the result of, I guess that's payroll costs. And I think you made a nexus that quote unquote, "most teachers live in Fairfax County." How, I've been trying to get that information for five years. So did you, did you actually have documentation that showed the number of teachers and who resides in Fairfax County?
It was provided to me by, by your front office, so.
Oh, well, that's fantastic.
And I'm measuring it by payroll. And not, so this is, it's easy to think of this as a head count, but it's really where, where the payroll that goes with that head count resides. And so the number, if you just counted the workers without multiplying them by their
Employees.
The employees without.
Sorry, I don't like the word workers.
I agree. Employees, without considering that there are wage differentials among those employees. So you can do it by your, by your W two.
So you didn't necessarily do it by number of employees, you did it by amount of dollars.
That's, that's what we're measuring. And the number comes out different. It was one of the feedback I got as the staff was reviewing this, and our numbers are a little different than your numbers. And they were talking, they were doing a head count and I was doing a payroll count. So this is where the payroll goes.
Okay. And then sort of the notion that, well, you know, if we didn't exist, you know, who would fill that space? Well, I mean, I mean, I hate to say it, but it's a little bit of a non-starter because we're required by law to exist. So, you know, I mean, it's not like, well, you know, we should just, you know, close up shopping.
No, but it is, it is a way to, to put a boundary on what funds flow from your budget and where they go, is to, is to, and also to think about the payroll, that one point one five billion dollars that's spent in Fairfax County that goes home to residents in Fairfax County. If, if you had half as many employees and the payroll is distributed evenly, well, then that number's going to be half as big. And so the, if you begin to get a sense of the magnitudes, and that's what economists do.
And I know other people have questions, so this is going to be my last point, but sort of in the vernacular of, you know, there's a Paul Harvey rest of the story here, which is, you know, we are not a tax revenue generating organization. We are a tax generating organization. And that money that is a part of the budget is as a result of increasing taxes. So, you know, growing FCPS, I mean, what I don't want to do is have the, it seems conclusionary almost that the bigger FCPS is, the greater it is for Fairfax County. And that's kind of the notion that, you know, the government solves everything. And I worry about that because we, you know, we've just had a joint Board of Supervisors, School Board, early budget presentation where the commercial real estate vacancy rate has ostensibly not changed. I mean, it's so minuscule that it has ostensibly not changed. And the way in which you divest the Fairfax County taxpayer of more of a burden is the shift from the homeowner and, and personal property taxes supporting us to having commercial entities. And so I hope the takeaway from this isn't that, well, the bigger we are, the better it is for Fairfax County. No, what we want is more private enterprise shouldering more of that burden and providing a diversified economic support system that, I don't know what that factor is called again, but I can't wait to look it up because I love data. But the, the factor of the dollars, I'd rather a private industry, and I don't know if it's the same for government, if the one point four, whatever factor for us locally, is the same for private industry as it is for a governmental entity, but the more the return is from a tax revenue generating activity than a tax generating entity, I would think the better.
Well, I think, you know, one could argue, I wouldn't want to argue that more is better in this case. What I, but I would argue.
Good, we're in agreement.
But, but what I, I think the reason to do this is to know what you get for it. As you evaluate the, the test scores of your students, as you evaluate their ability to get into colleges, there's very, there's a number of ways to evaluate the value of the product and service you provide. It's rare that anybody looks at, well, what else do we get beyond good education? Or an education that's responsive to the needs of the workforce or to the economy? Well, in this case, it isn't like all this money just comes in from the taxpayers and gets spent and produces education. It does. In addition to that, it, it supports twenty-seven thousand two hundred jobs, it supports almost fourteen thousand jobs beyond the ones that are here, that there are other consequences. And so having some sense of what they are, and the justification in and of itself to spend more or less is just another consequence. I would argue that a significant portion of the value of housing in Fairfax County, it's not a cheap place to live, as you know, the differential in value of housing here compared to housing in Culpeper County, isn't just square feet or lot size. It's the, it's the quality of life that the county offers. And business people who I talk to say, our biggest need, what preventing us from growing is that we don't have talent. We need workforce. We need workers who have the ability to be, to be retrained, be upskilled over their life, to change careers. A good school system is core to that value. So we could actually say, well, what percentage? You could calculate this. Well, if we had a bad school system, how much would that take off the value of houses? And what's the tax implications of that? So there's lots of ways to slice this. Businesses don't come here unless they have a good school system. How good does it have to be? I can't tell you that. Does it have to cost three billion dollars a year to do? That's another issue. But, but it is really incritical in this, the county's government has, the county's economy and the regions, Northern Virginia, the whole state has struggled to create, it's creating lots of jobs, they pay half as much as the jobs they lost during the recession. So we're not creating the kinds of jobs we used to. And we need to attract businesses that will invest in jobs that will generate high value added in the private sector, absolutely, high value added in the private sector. And they're not going to go anywhere. Those workers and that investment won't go anywhere unless they have good school. So there's a, there's a, a lot of pieces here. And this is, this is just another piece of the story.
Okay, I thank you for that. I would say that part of the reason that we're not having higher paid jobs is because our taxes are too high, but that's a personal opinion. Thank you.
Mrs. Strauss?
Thank you, Dr. Fuller. You have a wonderful reputation here in Fairfax County. So we very much appreciate that you were the person who did this study on our behalf and that you took the time to come tonight.
I enjoyed being here, thank you.
So thank you very much. I think the other interesting takeaway from this presentation, and by the way, really appreciate the detail, because I think it explains three hundred and sixty degrees around the issue, so I very much appreciate it. When we talk about building a robust economy, not only in Fairfax County in Virginia, but in the nation, the question is from a payroll, a dollar paid out, where does it, is it then reinvested back into the community? And certainly in a lot of the debates, the, perhaps some of the very wealthiest of citizens, that money does not necessarily come back into an economy. And a school system, a public school system, we are very labor intensive, tend to be sort of a middle-class operation. And I think what you are showing us is that as a, sort of a middle-class child-centered operation, a very large portion of the payroll that goes out does come back in and is reinvested. So that the, the total impact then on the economy is one of building and supporting more jobs. And we don't often think about that and don't often see that. And I think you showed us, I guess, the other value. So I very much appreciate that. The, the other piece that is comforting is in your analysis that when you talk about the payroll, the amount of that that actually does stay in Fairfax County. I think that that is, that is news to us, and I think that's good news to us. I think it also shows that robust programs for children is a good thing. And there is a return, as you said, a return on that investment besides providing good education for children, but it is a real contributor to our economy and to our culture. So that all of, all of those things are a positive impact to our county. So thank you very much. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate this look. And again, thank you for coming tonight, because I know that we had kind of, you had rearranged yourself to get here tonight, so.
Well, it, I like to talk about my work, and I think it's important to be able to answer questions and have this kind of discussion.
And the fact that you're here tonight, it is live streamed, so the entire county will be able to benefit from your good work. Thank you, Dr. Fuller.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Fuller, for your very detailed report. I found it fascinating to read and also for your earlier disclosure about the impact of dyslexia screening and focus on that. I appreciate that, too. I have a couple of questions regarding your report. One is that you talk about the multiplier effect of investing in Fairfax County schools and that it's about a one point two multiplier. Is that correct?
After tax, yeah, that's.
After tax, okay. And so that's, that one point two is after tax, so it actually stays in Fairfax County versus, you know, as we all know, income tax gets paid in Fairfax County and shipped to Richmond, and we get a very small piece of it back. So that one point two is really interesting. One of the questions that I have is regarding the impact of the period of time in which Fairfax County was having challenges with budgets. And so we cut so many programs, similar to, or cut funding per pupil funding, similar to, you'd almost say a sequestration of the public school system. And so did you look at all about, at the impact of those cuts on the overall economy in Fairfax County over the past several years?
No, no, this is, this is your approved budget for fiscal seventeen. And if that's spent the way it was blocked out to be spent, this is the impact it would produce. So if you were to evaluate the, the, the reduction in spending or the cancellation of programs, this probably isn't the way to do it. The worth of those programs and their effect on the targeted students or the population and the impacts on that, and how that learning was achieved otherwise was, if it wasn't at all forgone, or was it done in the private sector? I mean, you can track these and come up with a cost benefit analysis, but economic impact analysis wouldn't be the right way to do that.
Okay, did you also take a look at the value of the amount of scholarships that our graduating seniors received? So for example, I think about West Potomac High School where the seniors last year took over five million dollars in scholarships. And so that meant that five million dollars actually stayed in Fairfax County rather than going to Charlottesville, New York, or wherever else.
I didn't include that. There's, there's probably leakages either way. And well, it's, I think it's an important statement. Many school systems, when they do this, try to evaluate the impact of education on the earning power of their students. And then it gets down to, did they learn what they're earning, did they learn the skills that they're earning with here, or did they learn somewhere else? Was it college or high school? Or could have they have learned more if they'd had a different program? So it gets into all sorts of, different kinds of analytical judgments. And this is, this was pretty simple and just straightforward, tracking where your money goes within the local economy and how much of it stays here and gets respent here.
Do you have any idea how we compare to other large school systems as far as how much stays? as far as how much stays within a jurisdiction? So if you, you said you did something similar for Montgomery County, and you had more leakage in Montgomery County, as in that the employees didn't necessarily live in the county? Do you have any idea of how we compare to other districts outside of Montgomery County?
Not really. I, I, I know from other work that I've done that, that almost 80% of all the job holders working in Arlington don't live in Arlington. Well, that may not be quite 80% of the school employees, but that's across all, all-
Wow.
The entire workforce, it's 70%. And they're tiny little places. And so, when I lived in Alexandria and worked in Fairfax, you know, it's, it's what people do. You move around. We wouldn't have a Beltway that's so crowded if people weren't moving around. But this county is, is a very, you know, say, complex economy. That's a good thing. It, it, it covers an awful lot of its requirements, and it's large geographically. And people that live here increasingly stay here to spend their money. What's increasingly interesting, too, is that over the last 10 years, more people move, drive into the county to work every day than drive out of the county to work every day. It used to be a commuter county, and now it, the in-commuting. And so, you know, the teachers, not very many of them, that drive in here to go to work, spend money here while they're working. But I didn't count their money, that they spent here if they live in Fairfax. Just bec- I also didn't count the money of teachers who live in Fairfax and go to Loudoun County to, to a restaurant. I mean, there's, it's going to go both ways, and pretty, those are pretty small flows. But there is a big exchange. The multipliers attempt to capture those differences. And your multipliers are larger than Loudoun County's multipliers, because you have more attractions here, more services to meet the needs of the residents. And there aren't, there isn't any other county in the state that, that has that complexity. And, and it's a much bigger and more complex county than Montgomery County. And that's their problem. And it's why their, their, their capture rate isn't as large.
Ms. Heinz?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Fuller. I remember, I think it was two summers ago, Ms. Darnett Kofax and I met with you. And I was very grateful that you were willing to come and talk to us. We had both read your study that you did for Montgomery County Public Schools. And we thought maybe this is something that we should do here. And so I'm grateful to you and to Superintendent Garza for making it happen. I think it's great. And it's just an important piece, very important piece of information for our community to have. I think, as Dr. Garza said, our number-one goal, and you said yourself, is teaching the children, right? That's our number one-
Has, has to be.
Has to be, right. We're not here to feed the economy, but I think it's good for people to know that when they invest their tax dollars in the school system, we are, hopefully, doing the right thing for our kids, but we are also helping the local economy. I think it's common sense, probably, if people thought about it, but it's wonderful to see it in a, in a report like that, this by, you know, a nationally renowned economist. So, thank you very much. I just had a couple of questions. You only, you, you didn't look at all at the sources of the revenue, right? That was not part of the-
I did not.
Okay, right, because it really doesn't matter, right? You just looked at the total dollars?
No, it didn't matter, it wouldn't have changed my results. It certainly matters to you, but it doesn't, it doesn't change the result.
Doesn't, right.
If this was all donated money from a philanthropist, it would have the same impact in the economy.
Right, thank you, that's what I figured. Also, you, you touched on this a little bit. We know that the school system is, also gives back to the community in the sense of keeping our property values up, making this the kind of a place where employers and families who can choose where they live come to, because they have options. Is there any, maybe there's really no way to measure the impact of this, of the school system on that piece?
Well, I think you can, you can maybe not measure it quite as accurately as the numbers I ran for this study, because this is really just a, a simple model. And, but, but by comparative analysis, there are many jurisdictions that, that are as, or you can find jurisdictions that are as large but not as wealthy. The economy doesn't work as well, and you look at the quality of services they provided. Isn't only schools, it's public safety, it's recreation. And these are areas that Fairfax ranks very well on. It's the quality of the roads and, and pride among the residents. And, and you say, now, what's behind all of that? And, and I know when I, I used to, in my youth, I used to help companies locate, when, when General Dynamics moved here back in the early eighties from St. Louis, I worked with all of the people they were transferring. We had a, a, a information center in Tysons that they would come, bring ten families a weekend as they went house hunting, what they asked for. Oh, thank you. What, what they asked for first is, we want information on schools and on test score performance. These were, these were mothers and fathers with kids that were coming here. They were going to pick where they were going to live based on the kind of school system. That might not be the right way to measure a school system, but that's what they knew about in 1982. And, and a lot of them ended up in Fairfax County. We knew where the headquarters was going to be. They call it Falls Church, but it's really Fairfax County, just across the interchange here and, and Route 50 and the Beltway. And, and those, they didn't all end here, but, but that was what they wanted to know about.
So, so is there a way, do you think, to go beyond the anecdotal on that? And actually, I mean, I, I mean, I don't want to necessarily, you know, give you more work, or I don't think I could all by myself, anyway. But I'm wondering if there's a way to study that?
There is.
Okay.
I'm absolutely positive. You'd have to pick the right methodology to produce the quality answer that you wanted. I do know from a survey that we completed this last year on, on require, on what we call the requirements for growth in this region. This was with fast-growing, medium-sized businesses. This was all about private sector, non-federally dependent businesses. There was, not one of them said lower taxes. That wasn't in their, their mindset. And this is about their business. Maybe they liked their own tax rate to be lower. But what they wanted was, they, they wanted, they were worried about workforce development, workforce retention, workforce, workforce attraction. And on the attraction piece, it's quality of the schools and quality of life on retention and development, it's continuing education for the workers and having high school and, and college graduates capable of learning, continued lifelong learning and upskilling during their careers. And it's, it's key. We have a shortage of qualified workers today, and, and the economy isn't really booming. So, so if it were to boom, the question is, who's going to do the work? And as, as all of the baby boomers and, and retire, who's going to fill in the gaps? Fairfax County didn't attract any new growth among the millennial age population last year or the year before. People move in, they move out, but it's the same number, and that doesn't support the workforce. It's, it has nothing to do with the school system. It's maybe housing costs, or they don't, they don't like living here, it's too much congestion. There's lots of reasons. But unless we solve the workforce problem, challenge, better word than problem, the challenge of the workforce for the future of the economy, the economy of Fairfax won't be the economy that it has been over the last 20 years. It, it has been the leading economy among jurisdictions around the country. This, this is, this is, people want what we have here.
Did you want to? No, I was just going to quickly add. I believe there's been some major real estate associations nationally that have done some studies about the correlation between effective schools and value of homes. So I think it's been more nationally, that could be extrapolated potentially here, but-
It, it can be done here, but there are, but it's, you could do it. It's correlated with business investment, too, and, and length of residence. There's a lot of variables that get connected to quality of life, and quality of life to people. It isn't air quality so much, even though it, that's really important. It's, it's, it's schools and public safety. Those two items among, they're the biggest budget items you have, and it's what's most important to people.
Schools and public safety. I had one more comment, I'm sorry, I'm, thank you. I just, I know I've heard you speak before about, you know, how important the types of jobs that we have are, you know? And you just said a few minutes ago that the kind of, the jobs we're replacing now are not the same high-quality, high-paying jobs that we used to have, right?
Well, the mix has changed. It isn't as favorable, it isn't.
Right. And so, I, I've heard you say in the past that research is an area that probably Fairfax County could be doing more of. And I, I think we do have a, a new research institute or institution right, right down the street here, and at, at Anova. And I, it's my understanding, too, that, yeah.
Well, that's, that's health, really, health, health research and-
Right.
Health is a really big industry.
Right.
Most of the health jobs that we're generating today are at the lower wage end of the scale, home healthcare workers, because we're old, some of us, anyway. And, and it, it, it isn't exactly the, the mix that, that you would want, but it's, it's, Fairfax is positioned, and it's doing well in learning how to do business for clients that aren't government clients. And it takes quite a while to pivot from a federal dependency to a global marketplace. And, and the private sector's working on it, it just takes time, and the, and the county's been very supportive of that.
Good, and I just want to add one thing. I don't know if you're aware, but the school system is actually partnering with this Anova research facility up here. We're going to do a pilot next year, no?
We're a long way out, but we've just worked on a conceptual model for an early college located there that would be focused on translational-
Yep.
Personalized medicine and study of the genome.
Well, and, and I think, you know, my, my boss, the George Mason University, is, is putting much more emphasis on research and small business startups. And this, this is a fertile county for this kind of activity. It's, it's a growth center on its own. It's going to put increasing demands on the school system. And on, and on the community colleges, too, just, or colleges, because continuing education's going to be so important. And there's, there's certainly teaming opportunities be- between you and, and Northern Virginia Community College to, to figure out how best to upskill the, the middle-aged worker.
Mrs. Hop? I'm sorry, I, your light was on, but I'll go to Ms. Darnett Kofax. Oh, I see, all right. I apologize, Dr. Fuller. We, we're trying out a new system here, and that's, we, and yes, I think next time we're going to have to move over, so I'll call on Ms. Paulcheck.
Thank you, sorry about that. Thank you again for this study. I had not had the pleasure of hearing you before, and it's very enlightening to see the background. One thing that especially stuck out to me was what you're saying, that the impact isn't just from contractors, that it really is people on Main Street. This is where our teachers shop and go and spend their salaries. I was wondering, is there any way to do, and I have a couple of questions. The first one is, is there any way to do a breakdown on the impact on, of, on specific industries within the county?
So, what, what I would do first, the simple way, is there, there, there are published budgets at, at different income levels that the federal government, the Department of Commerce, does surveys, how you spend your money? And if you, you, your household income is $40,000, you're going to spend your money differently than it's, if it's $100, and so forth. So they, they segment this into several categories. They, they can't be their averages. And, and lower income, of course, spends almost all of their money on food and, and clothing and, and housing, the basics, where a high-income household may take a trip to Europe. So they spend their money differently, and there's more leakage the higher the income of the job and so forth. So you, you could, you could characterize, I didn't do this, you could characterize the, the, the employment base of the, the school system and say, well, they're in this group, and let's see what they spend. You know, generally, about 24% of, of your spending, if you take your 100% salary and say 20, if you peel it all back, it's about 24% of it's left for, for groceries or eating out in local restaurants, or for personal services, beauty shops and barber shops and clothing, and, and local transportation. Doesn't sound like a big number. It doesn't include housing. Housing gets 30%, or whatever the number is. And pretty soon you, you, there's not much left. Saving gets 5% or 3% and so forth. So, yes, you could create a budget that characterized the workforce you wanted to talk about.
So I guess you, thank you, you gave us kind of, the general is approximately 24%. If we were to say, to ask you to look at it specifically for the county, is that kind of a large project?
No, no.
That would be-
No, it's, it's a, it's, if you sort of do it at, at a general level-
Right.
If you want to do it specifically, go ask people how they spend their money. I've done that, too, and, you know, they really don't want to tell you usually, but, and they, or they don't know.
Okay, perfect, thank you. My other question, and this might be a little trickier. Looking, and I guess, I don't, you were saying that you based yours on payroll, so not just headcount, but the payroll, going, staying in the county and leaving. Using those numbers, would it be possible to see if we were able to raise our beginning and mid-career teacher salaries where we hope for them to be in three years? Is there a way to see if that ha- that changes our numbers? That changes the way we look at it? I'm not sure if, you know, most of the, the salaries staying in the county are coming from a specific group, or if they are pretty spread out across our income levels?
Well, my, my, I would presume that, that higher income employees of the public school system are more likely to live in the county than, than part-time employees, bus drivers or, or cafeteria workers. People that are at, at the lower end of the pay scale, they're more likely maybe to live in Culpeper, or, and there, not that many live over there, but, but Prince William County, where the housing is cheaper. So, cost of living becomes a factor in doing that. So I would, I would be predisposed to think that if you paid your teachers more, more of them would live locally. But that, probably ought to pay more anyway and not worry about where, where they live. That's, that's, it's nice to know. But I wouldn't, that's not the rationale, is to get better teachers.
Right. No, I'm just wondering if it would change these numbers, but that-
It might change it a tiny bit, but, but you, it's such a large percentage. It's, it's more likely, I, I would worry about it going down. The higher you pay, the more you pay people, the more choices they have. It's also a, a function of the age of your workforce. Younger workers are more likely to live in, maybe in Arlington, or take the metro out here, and, you know, reverse commute. Middle-aged teachers are going to want to, they need a house, they have children. So, so age, the age profile is, is important.
Thank you. And my last thing is, is just a comment, I think, a little related to what Ms. Heinz was saying. This week, we had the pleasure of seeing our graduate of Genesis Works, which is a program that puts our young people who maybe, many said they wouldn't have considered a college, as IT interns in our local industries and businesses, and training them to be that workforce that we very desperately need, as well as our-
Internship programs are critical, and, and businesses are warming up to them. They really want to do more of that. And they used to do it at college levels, but at high school it would be really important.
Totally agree. And our cybersecurity program, which-
Oh, big.
So hopefully, we can continue to grow those programs. Thank you very much for your time.
Ms. Darnett Kofax?
Good evening, Dr. Fuller. You and I first met when I was chair of this board two years ago, and I, we were struggling at that time to garner community wi- community-wide support to fully fund our schools. Then I asked you at that time for a quote. And it, it's something that I enjoyed so much, I want to repeat again, because I think the message is quite, quite, it, it needs to, to stay. It says, and you said, "To compete with the nation's other major business centers, Fairfax County will require increased public investment in education and infrastructure that strengthens, that strengthens the county's quality of life, and accordingly, will make the difference in attracting new business investment and high-value-added jobs necessary for economic growth. This is the time to increase local public spending to strengthen the county's competitive position, and not time to cut back and disinvest in the county's critical assets, thereby becoming less competitive with our peers." So, I, I thank you for that quote. It, it took a while to get, it took a year and a half after that quote to get the investment that we needed, but we are, we're continuing. And that partnership with our, our funding bodies is, is, is always something that we're working on. I know they respect you and your work, and that's why, what Ms. Heinz mentioned, when she was beginning her term and I was ending mine, we asked just to, for meeting to pick your brain, and we talked about this study. This is something, this year I'm the budget chair, and the information from this will be extremely beneficial, and it will be something that I will use and share widely. So I, I, I thank you for this. My only question is, was some- My only question is with something you had talked about, or you just mentioned, it's a little outside of the study, but you stated a little, a moment ago, that we don't have support here of millennials, and, you know, our millennials are our young teachers. How here in this county could we do better to support that segment?
Well, my first, when I first tell people is, millennials are growing up, and they're getting older now, and they're more like, they're, the leading edge is around, they're 36-years-old, maybe, it depends on how it's defined, but they are more likely to be moving into houses in the suburbs, out of apartment buildings, closer in the urban centers as we move forward over the next five years. So it's a self-correcting problem. The surveys of millennials that have been done nationally come out with numbers like 80% of them say they will, by the time they're 45, live in a, in a single-family house in the suburbs and have children, but, you know, they're just doing it later. So, so it's been a surprise in a way that they haven't been like their parents, they're just 10-years later in doing what their parents did.
Okay.
But what is attractive to millennials, I think, is what is clearly found in Reston Town Center and is found in, increasingly will be found in Tyson's. So Fairfax County already is creating urban centers with, and just down the road here in the Mosaic District, which I haven't experienced personally, but I know where it is, that these kinds of spaces and the kinds of external attractions, the restaurants and the sporting activities, the parks and so forth, suburban counties have a hard time providing an urban environment. Fairfax is fortunate that it has its own city center, and Tyson's and Reston Town Center has come along, not unexpectedly, but it's become a very attractive place to live. There's other places like that, that have good sidewalks and shops and multifamily housing. So the county has to be very conscious of its land use policies that allow higher density in the right places where there's good transportation. And more, and not to, millennials don't, they have big college debts, that's what they're characterized by, and they don't have big savings, so having down payments for housing is a challenge, unless they have parents that will help them. And so, cheaper housing, which is higher density, maybe town housing, and often counties, I know as I work with counties, when somebody brings a proposal forward for townhouses or multifamily, they just see, they see school kids as if school kids are bad. They have, and you have them too, you have school generation rates for different kinds of housing units, for different size units. And so residential has a very difficult time in a lot of counties getting a foothold. And so mixed-use has become very popular, but it's also popular to millennials, they like living in mixed-use development. So there's solutions to this, and you have to imagine Fairfax County's on top of this, they have a very advanced economic or urban, city, whatever, county planning department, excuse me, and they know what works, and there's good examples around the country. It doesn't work, you wouldn't want it everywhere in the county, but there are centers that have metro rail access or good highway access and public transportation otherwise. So that's how you keep your millennials, and I think Arlington's figured this out.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think you have to worry about keeping the old people too, and keeping them here so they can afford to live here and work longer, because we can't afford to have them drop out of the workforce. And they're going to become condo dwellers, and as they, they sell their houses and begin living on the equity buildup that they've had. So it's, this is way beyond the public school system, except some of those older people may be mentors or tutors, or have a relationship that would benefit the school system. So I think we have to be, think out of the box on all of this today.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Ms. McGlock?
There's always a benefit of coming later in the queue, because, you know, sometimes the conversation ends up triggering maybe some other thoughts. I appreciate your time, Dr. Fuller, and am mindful that with the 12 of us, even if we each wanted 10 minutes of your time for this discourse, we would be taking up another two hours of the business meeting, so.
This is going to be a long night for you.
Yeah, so I will try, for my colleague's sake and our staff and your time, to distill it to probably the things that are most on my mind from this presentation. First, what occurred to me, and I want to make sure I'm capturing, I think, the essence of your report and your findings, we all know as citizens who do pay taxes, that in our paychecks, the federal government gobbles up the largest amount by far, followed by the state and then our local taxes. And yet, the inverse happens in terms of the direct return on investment. So what we pay here in Fairfax County, much of it goes directly to the amazing services that we enjoy as residents here. You know, over 70% of the operation of this school system comes because our local taxpayers and the board supervisors and their confidence in us return it to us to be able to run the schools. So we can't look to the federal government or the state to thank them for the vast majority of financial resources that come to us. When you then look at even what the federal government gives to Virginia, again, not substantial. So, in terms of people appreciating, and Ms. Schultz has been a colleague of mine for five years, and we agree on much and have disagreements on other issues, and this is one of them. Knowing family members who've lived in New York, Massachusetts, and even California, where I'm a native, our taxes are very low in Fairfax County for the return of services and the quality of life, and that's why I didn't return to the wine country, and I rose my, raised three boys here. So that's my pitch for Fairfax County. So I want to make sure, was that a piece of what you really hope this board and our county and anyone who's looking at this report is really recognizing, look, no one wants to pay taxes at local, state, or federal more than you'd have to, but what we do to date has been a significant return on investment for all the residents who live here?
And you can measure that many ways, this is just one. I would, I guess if I were having to talk to a group of taxpayers, and I'd say, well, how many of you have children in the public school system? And only a quarter of the hands go up. And the others, you say, well, why are they paying for all of this? And so I'd rather argue to the other three-quarters, because they're not getting what they think is a direct benefit. They might have had kids in school, but maybe never, a lot of people don't have children. And, and so I would say, well, we can see it in your house value. And there is a direct correlation between your property tax and your house value, because property tax converts to quality of life. And so you can, your house appreciates, you're getting a return on investment, you're living there and you're getting a return on it, and it's subsidized by Uncle Sam if you have a mortgage. So, so it isn't such a bad deal. And on top of that, the money you're spending, a lot of it goes back into the local economy. Not only are you repaying, supporting 190,000 students, every day going to all these schools that you have, and coming out and being a positive force within the county or within the national workforce, who knows where they're going to end up, live ultimately. But, but this money just isn't absorbed in the sponge of the, you know, just sort of you lost here. It gets turned over, and not only once, once and another quarter, or whatever the multiplier is. When you have a 1.25 or a 1.43, that $1 is going out too. And so, in addition, another 25 cents or 30 cents or 40 cents in the local economy. And so, that money actually, which, if you don't have children in the school system, you may have a shop on Main Street in Fairfax City, and some of that money comes into your store. So it isn't all lost. So I think this is just part of the story, it isn't the whole story, and I think you have to be able to tell the other parts as well.
And then the second question I had was, I'm familiar somewhat with the Economic Development Authority, which is headed by Jerry Gordon. When you think about Fairfax County wanting to be very intentional by creating the EDA and wanting to continue to generate businesses, I wondered if, again, not wanting to take up time this evening, but just if you could touch on, does the EDA also turn to you and look for ways to better understand with intentionality, you know, the work they're trying to do and what you understand in terms of the economy, and, you know, what is it that, looking at Fairfax, you even touched on, who attracting millennials, attracting, you know, empty nesters to stay and retire here, you know, is that, do those types of dialogues occur?
They do, they do, and I know Jerry quite well, we've talked, we don't work together too, he has a very good staff, but, but we do consult with each other and share information, and they have the answer. It's, they're competing with other jurisdictions that have the same answer in other places. So this is a very, very competitive country, there's 10 or 15 locations, we're one of them right here in Northern Virginia.
Right.
But we're competing and having a difficult time competing with others because they have a different kind of lifestyle or a different kind of an economy. We still have a federal dominance to our, we're an administrative center, it's a different kind of economy, not a bad one at all, but it's different, and it hasn't been as competitive with some others.
Great.
So we're working on it.
Thank you again for your time tonight.
Good to be here.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Dr. Fuller. Your talk sent me shuddering back to my college days and sitting in economics classes, and made me remember why I ended up going into the Army.
Did you pass?
I did pass, although I think I reached the point of diminishing returns, for sure.
You learned a good concept.
Yeah, I remember a few things. I wonder whether or not you can give us any perspective or understanding about the change over time for the data you provided, the information? Do you have any sense, was there a study done 10-years ago, or do you have any sense of what's happening?
There wasn't. What has happened recently, though, the multipliers that were available that reflected the pre-recession economy were much larger. And the recession, and these that really reflect sort of the economy, and even though they were, they were published in October of 15, they reflected the economy in '12 and '13, takes quite a long time, it's a, it's a large model that the federal government runs, but it's post-recession. And what happened during recession is the economy became much more efficient, far fewer jobs are generated per $100,000 worth or $1 million worth of expenditure. So the numbers on my chart that I showed you, just take a minute here, one more. So those numbers on jobs supported is per million dollars of outlay. They used to be much larger, so we have become much more efficient. The private sector, when they're threatened, figure out how to use technology instead of hiring workers, they dumb the jobs down. So our economies changed, and so had we done this in '07, your impacts would have been larger. So they're quite large as they are under circumstances of a much more efficient stingy economy. Saving rates are up.
So, would it be fair to say then, perhaps, a comparison over time isn't as useful as a comparison across jurisdictions? If you had that data comparing it to another?
You could do it per.
I guess what I'm getting at is sort of, I mean, you used the term leakage, and so that sounded like the, that's the negative driver in this analysis, right? We want to reduce the leakage, is that?
If you want to maximize the retention of your budget within the local economy, maximize the impact, you want to reduce leakage.
And I think that, I would think that's a good thing, that is something we'd want to maximize. So comparing leakage for Fairfax County versus other jurisdictions.
You have the least.
The least within?
Within this, within this region.
That's fantastic.
Because you're the largest and you have the most integrated economy.
So, so how, how can we reduce leakage even further? What would be the recommendations, or what are the biggest drivers of the leakage?
Well, if it were legal, you would only contract with local businesses. But you have, you know, there are local business, there are business, you have services you need that aren't provided by local businesses, so you have to, if you need new furniture, it's not made here, it's made somewhere else, it may just be wholesale through here. But there are ways, do more of your work in-house, not, don't contract out as much, but that raises your budget or your payroll. It's hard to do, I think by accident, it's come out very well. Maybe it isn't entirely accident, but the fact that so many of your teachers choose to live here is a, is a, I think, a pretty good measure of the quality that the county offers.
And do you have a sense of that percentage over time, or we?
I don't.
Okay. I wonder, I wonder if the, this, Dr. Gardner, do you know if the school system maintains that statistic of how many employees actually live in the county?
Yes, in fact, when I first came to the school system four-years ago, that was something that I'd heard a lot, is that our employees don't live, most of our employees don't live in the county. So we did that analysis my first year here, and I was surprised to find that it was at that time about 65%. On your study and in this year, I think it's showing that's a little bit higher even, slightly, it's a little bit higher than even what it was four-years ago.
And in any sense of, you know, say, from the 90s or from the 80s or anything like that?
You know, I don't, I don't know, we'd have to look to see if we had, you know, captured it back then, I'm sure we do have some way of looking back that far, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm a longtime resident of the county, so it's always been said that our housing was very expensive, and, but I do think that it's better for the school system and for the county, to the extent we can figure out ways to keep the teachers and staff in the county and connected to the schools that they're working at as well, so.
Part of this is a byproduct of increasing congestion and time of commute, and so people, and it's a cultural shift too, people are choosing to live closer to where they work so they don't lose that time out of their life, and that, so that gets people living in proximity to employment places.
Well, thank you very much.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you for the presentation, Dr. Fuller. I am not going to ask the questions that have been already asked, but I'm going to ask you from, a couple of questions from slightly different angle, that in order to get a fuller picture, no pun intended, that when you talked about a FCPS, Fairfax County Public Schools, a economic impact in the county, is our impact, I know that your studies focused on Fairfax County, whether our impact is just similar to rest of the school district in the Commonwealth, or we have a higher impact proportionally than other school districts?
Well, as I've mentioned, I think it's, the return on, and if you think of it as return on investment, for every dollar you spend out of your budget, you keep a larger share of it in this county than other counties in the state. And it's because of this clustering of your workforce and, and that you have businesses here that can actually do the kinds of work you want among contracting, you know, and the construction and work done by non-direct payroll workers, they're local, wherein in, poor Culpeper, I'll pick on them again, they have to contract with somebody from Fairfax to come out and do the work they need done, where you can find that work done here. So you have a bigger impact, and it's, you know, it isn't because of anything you did, it's because you just happen to be a big county.
How about, how about, you know, school systems' impact compared to county governments' impact?
Well, I didn't, you have more employees than the county government, they may have a higher, they may have a higher payroll per worker or a higher wage rate. I didn't do that analysis, and so I don't know what they buy and where that, where their contractor base resides. I do know that, that your contribution to the county's economy, the 2%, is only exceeded by the federal government, so you're bigger on that account, even though I didn't do, I didn't. So you're bigger on that account, even though I didn't do, I didn't go through the analysis for the county.
Okay, thank you. I, you know, I have just a couple more questions. Since you just mentioned about federal government, how are we compared to the federal government? Are we a much smaller than federal government's impact?
No, 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 you're, the federal government, it, it, well, it's the federal contracting that drives their impacts and the amount of that work that's done locally and where their, the federal contract workers live. And so it, it's, it, where your $2 billion number, theirs is going to be multiples of that. I don't know what it exactly is. It's, I don't know what the reten, the retention is, but, I mean, they're working off of a $25 billion base instead of a $3 billion base.
So one last question, you know, you may, may not have the answer to this, but in, in, in the Commonwealth of Virginia, in, in all school districts, is basically, do the school systems are the largest employers in, in the districts?
I think generally they're, they're, they would be in the top five. There may be some smaller counties where there happens to be a big employer, like Dominion Resources or somebody that, where they, that they would have more employees. So we're down by where the, in, where the nuclear power plants are down in Lake Anna, that, you know, they, they may have more employees than the local school system because of the scale. But generally, local governments are large employers because of the, the range of services that they provide.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Fuller, you've given us a fascinating report, and I know we're going to be mining data out of it for a very long time. I just wanted to say, I, I, I found it very interesting to be looking at what we do in a very different way, from not just the value of what we do every day, but also the interconnection with, with the local economy and the fact that when we do what we do, that we're, we're adding to the community in terms of salaries, in terms of the purchase of goods and services, and that it, it, it is a remaining investment that, with this interconnection, where we, the, the local economy and the school system contribute to each other. So it's, it's, it's fascinating to think about that interaction and how the, the more we provide, both in value, but also in, in our purchase of goods and services and providing salaries, you know, the, the more vibrant the local economy. So I want to thank you particularly for being so generous with your time and for giving us this excellent report. So thank you so much for being here with us tonight, Dr. Fuller.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the great questions. It's been quite a nice evening.
Yes.
Thank you.
We now go to the consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval by the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. I want to remind board members and members of the audience and viewing at home that we have removed item 4.08, Suicide Prevention Risk Assessment and Postvention Policy, and that will be put on the agenda for November 3 as an action item. What we do have tonight is 4.01, Appoint Individuals to Serve on Committees as Detailed in the Agenda Item. 4.02, Adopt Policy 1802, Super Student Representative to the School Board as Detailed in the Agenda Item. 4.03, Award a Contract for the South Lakes High School Edition Project to the Lowest Responsive and Responsible Bitter, Branch and Associates, Inc., in the Amount of $8,298,000, and Authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to Execute, Deliver, and Administer the Contract on behalf of the School Board. 4.04, Authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent, Department of Facilities and Transportation Services, either of whom may act without the other to negotiate, execute, and administer, on behalf of the School Board, a lease agreement for bus parking to serve the school division's needs in the Springfield area, including any and all related lease documentation in consultation with legal counsel for the school division and at rates within the school division's budget. 4.05, Confirm the Appointments and Separations for the Period Beginning July 1, 2016 and Ending September 30, 2016. 4.04, Confirm the Separations for the Period Beginning September 1, 2016 and Ending September 30, 2016. 4.07, Adopt the Newly Revised 2016 Fairfax County Purchasing Resolution Previously Adopted by the Board of Supervisors Subject to the Conditions Detailed in the Agenda Item. Is there any objection to approving the Consent Agenda? Hearing and seeing none, the Consent Agenda is approved. New Business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 5.01, Confirm the Elected Members of the Fairfax County Public Schools Early Head Start, Family and Early Childhood Education Program, FSEP Head Start, Policy Committee as Detailed in the Agenda Item. 5.02, Approve Changes to the List of Middle and High School Course Offerings for the 2017-18 School Year as Recommended by the Course Review Committee and as Detailed in the Agenda Item. We now turn to Superintendent Matters, and I call on Dr. Garza.
Thank you, ma'am. Chair members of the board, I'm mindful of the fact that you all have closed session after this meeting, so I'm going to be very brief. I just, I just had to comment on the fact that we had the inaugural breaking through ceremony for our first class of Genesis Works Young Professional Interns. And I really appreciate Ms. Huff and Ms. Paulcheck were with me sometime this week. I forget what night it was. And I was just, I couldn't have been more proud of that wonderful event. The room was full of business representatives from various businesses throughout the county. And I would just tell you, the stories from the students would, I mean, they really were touching and what a life-changing experience it will be for these students. So I would just say, this is something we've got to continue to support and encourage, the community support. I know we have hundreds of students who could participate, could benefit from a similar experience. I will tell you, as you met students and they told me their intern, you know, their, their internship was at LMI or Intelsat or AT&amp;T or Strayer University. I know many parents that were, joined us that night were just emotional because they were so proud of their, their students. So I'm very proud of the program, and I would just encourage us to continue to make sure that we have the, we're the largest inaugural class of any of the other four metropolitan areas. So we're starting on, in a great place. We just need to continue to build it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. Next on the agenda is Board Reports. I call on Ms. McLaughlin for a report of the Governance Committee.
All right, where's all my, my notes? All right, so I'll just go off the top of my head. Basically, we had a governance meeting this morning, and we covered three more timely topics that had to deal with, an update on this, the corporate sponsorship for naming rights policy that is still having staff reviewing it in terms of talking to the Chamber of Commerce and getting that input before the board finalizes the policy itself. We also talked about the student, the new student recognition program and that, how we could work with our principals and, and getting information about students who are wanting to be recognized or who we think it's important to recognize. And as Dr. Garza shared with us, Bill Curran, who's our countywide Director of Student Activities, has really got a good plan in place for helping to funnel that information to the School Board Office. Then we also talked about the issue of School Board Advocacy Letters. And so the Governance Committee is still spending thoughtful and quality discussion time on it. And I'm pleased with the progress we're making on that. And our, our Clerk of the Board will be bringing us some additional information along with our General Counsel. John Foster is drafting some guidelines for the Governance Committee to consider. So overall, I would say we're keeping quite busy and, and you can certainly consider submitting form topics to generate more work for governance.
Thank you for that invitation. Next on the agenda is Board Matters, and I call on Ms. Darnett Kofix.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. The last few weeks, I have had the opportunity to visit several of my schools, including Mount Vernon Woods, West Potomac High School, Crestwood Elementary School, and Cameron. And there are a lot of amazing things happening at each and every one of those schools, and it's, it was a great opportunity to visit after the back-to-school visits as well. So then last night, I was honored to serve as a guest reader during Bush Hill Elementary Schools. They had a Snuggle Up and Read event during their book fair, where we were invited to wear our pajamas and read aloud, and it was as delightful as it sounds. I want to congratulate our Instructional Services team for putting together the College Fair and College Night earlier this week. As a parent of a high school senior, I truly appreciated the opportunity for my daughter to be able to talk to representatives from so many colleges and all in one place. So thank you all for doing that. And for those of you out there who have college, high school sophomores or juniors, next year take advantage of this opportunity because it's really quite well done and it's lots of great information. And finally, I want to extend my congratulations to my colleague, Ryan McElveen, and his wife Shwene, on the birth of their daughter, Sienna Lilly, earlier this week. And Ryan, who is not sitting beside me, already went home to begin to catch up on his sleep. So hope you're sleeping well.
Mr. Wilson?
I think I'll pass. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Just a couple of things. I wanted to let my colleagues know that on last Wednesday, the 12th, I did attend the annual celebration that EduFerturo was hosting in Arlington, of which Arlington Superintendent Patrick Murphy was being honored. And it's an 18-year-old organization that originally began in Arlington by a collection of Bolivian immigrant parents who were looking at ways to really help Hispanic students find success in academics. And it's really, was a wonderful evening to hear about the growth of the organization. It's exciting that through the additional grant funds, they are now going to be doing more work here in Fairfax County Public Schools. One of our parent liaisons is actively involved with EduFerturo, and a former Fairfax County parent liaison is now working directly with the organization. So I just wanted to make sure my colleagues were aware that this really is a wonderful nonprofit organization, a community partner, and I'm pleased that they're going to be able to start doing more work here within the county schools. I also wanted to just share with you that I've been working with my Region Five Superintendent, Frances Ivy, and her Executive Principal, Rebecca Banning, looking at some really interesting data at the high school level. And so once we look at it a little bit more deeply, I'll be consulting with Dr. Garza, but I would like to summarize for all of you some of that analysis that we're looking at. And part of it has to do with AP scores and high school letter grades, which, you know, we often talk about how we can use multiple, multiple data points and, and looking at accuracy of assessing students. And so, you know, Dr. Garza, I just wanted to publicly be able to extend my appreciation to Dr. Ivy because she's really invested time and work in this. And, you know, I, I, we've talked about even having conversations with some of the other regional superintendents, you know, looking at this and, you know, the, what value it will serve for high school principals and their administrative teams and working with collaborative learning teams. And so it's just, for me, exciting to see that a school system that has a database that's so rich that allows us to continue to look for ways of improving grading and assessing, it, it's something that I, again, had not seen done in this way before, and I think it will be beneficial for both students and educators. And then, other than that, I wanted to also let you all know that I happened to have a rare opportunity to visit with City Superintendent Peter Noonan, and really enjoyed getting the chance to talk with him about the great work that Dr. Garza's team and Steve Lockhart led on the grading policies and assessments. And that was something that Peter even began a dialogue back in 2009. So it's to really see us moving, again, in that direction to help with accuracy in assessments and grading. I wanted to kind of circle back with him and let him know that, seven years later, and there's some really good progress going on. So other than that, I also just want to extend my appreciation to the Arts Council of Fairfax County for inviting the board members, several of whom we were there, to really enjoy celebrating the arts here in Fairfax County and all of the public and private stakeholders that enable the arts to continue to be promoted and celebrated within Fairfax. I think it's another defining aspect of what makes this a great place to live.
Mr. Moon?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Mrs. Strauss?
I just want to thank the town of Herndon and Mayor Lisa Merkel. We've had numerous meetings in the last couple of weeks dealing with issues on how to provide better services to children and families, but I really appreciate the support of the Herndon community for our children. Thank you.
Mrs. Corbin Sanders?
Yes, thank you. I want to first start by thanking the Fate Foundation for their annual dinner last week, where we celebrated the successes of our high schools and the career and technical education programs across the county. It's something that is always so, just heartwarming to see the great skills, the technical skills that our students are able to achieve through the CTE and academy programs. Last week, we heard about all of the great work that is being done for, not only in the building area, but also in the automobile sector. I also want to thank the parents of Holland Meadows and Holly Elementary School for inviting me to their PTA events. And would like to also thank the people of West Potomac High School who hosted, put together and hosted the Oktoberfest last weekend to raise much-needed funds for building an outdoor classroom, because what has happened is as the county has had less money to invest in infrastructure build, we see many of our community groups working together to raise funds to be able to, to build ahead of schedule. So that's a great event, and thank you for all the organizers of that. And then last, I want to announce with great sadness the passing of a true leader in, an education leader in our community. Mike Skinner, who was a beloved principal of Mount Vernon High School for decades, passed away this past week, and he will certainly be missed by not only the students who were taught by him and who attended his school, but also the greater community, because he always was looking out for what was great and what was important for our students. And so I extend my condolences to his wife, Lucy, and just want the community to know that we have lost a great leader. Thank you.
Mrs. Schultz?
I've got a, fortunately, I've got quite a few announcements. Every year in the fall and in the spring, I do a Citizen Town Hall meeting series, and I'm announcing my Fall Citizen Town Hall Series, Wednesday, October 26th, at 7:00 p.m. at West Springfield Elementary School Cafeteria. This has gone out and is available on the web, and I'll be publishing it again, but I want to make sure I get these dates out there. Wednesday, October 26th, 7:00 p.m., West Springfield Elementary. Tuesday, November 1st, 7:00 p.m., Willow Springs Elementary. And Wednesday, November 2nd, 7:00 p.m., Fairview Elementary. I know it's just over the line, Ms. McLaughlin, but I have a lot of my kids going there. I do spread them out over my entire district, because of the size, the physical geographical size of the Springfield District. I try to do one sort of in the northern end, one in the middle, and one in the southern end, to try to accommodate people. You don't have to go to one of those, or be in one of those pyramids, and it's not just for Fairfax County parents or students, it's for any residents in the Springfield District. In addition, I have a series of PTA President Coffees that I do, for all, and I just want to clarify, for all PTA Presidents of all schools that children from the Springfield District attend. So, not just the schools contained within the Springfield District, but if children from the Springfield District attend your school, there is going to be a Presidents' Meeting on Friday, November 4th, at the Mott Center, and that information has been sent to the PTA Presidents. I'm not exactly sure what's happening, if there's like a series of full moons, but a number of my school communities have had a variety of challenges, and I thank parents at Robinson, at South County, at Lake Braddock, for taking the time to meet with me, talk with difficulties, and work through things, either if it happens to be reactively, but more proactively, and that gives me the opportunity to work with staff, work with other board members who may be affected, and some of them have been difficult and complex, but I appreciate the opportunity to serve you, and try to solve some of these issues. I want to thank Casa Hispania de Virginia for inviting me to be a featured speaker at their event, the Open Door Korean Church, for being a speaker there and welcoming me into your community. The Arts Award Luncheon that Ms. McLaughlin mentioned, I want to congratulate the Jack Kent Cook Foundation for their Arts Philanthropy Award. And Mount Vernon, Mount Vernon, for their educational impact in Fairfax County, not only for students, but for adults as well. There was a federal District Court Judge ruling this morning for FCPS students or residents who may have been impacted by the voter registration crash of the website. Just want to let you know, if you were impacted by that, you have till midnight tomorrow night to register, if you are not registered. I do, I don't typically do this, but I do briefly want to mention something that was brought up in the speakers this evening, about books and inappropriate material making its way into our curriculum. I want to thank Dr. Presidio, if he's still here, maybe he's not, and his staff for meeting with Ms. Huff and me. And I take this very seriously, and I, to be perfectly honest, I think we're getting it wrong sometimes. Hollywood rates movies to inform people about what's appropriate, and what age children should be able to go see certain movies, and gives parents information. It's not great information, but at least it's some. The music industry, I mean, if you go on Apple and iTunes, songs that have explicit material are identified for parents to make choices, or consumers to make choices. Our websites and our school buildings block access to inappropriate material over the web, and yet somehow, books and materials that students consume as a part of our curriculum seem to not rise to the level of informing parents, and I think it's a problem. I'm working on it. I'm not a book burner. I don't think that we should take material out, but I do think we should put into the hands of parents, the ability to be an informed primary educator of their own children. And I take this very, very seriously, and I will be working, you know, to continuously improve the process. I don't think the process is broken, but I think it could be improved. And I'm a parent too, so I don't want it just for my own kids, but for your children and your grandchildren. And the last thing that I want to say is, an unfortunate community incident that's made its way into the news. I don't want to get political, but we are in a political season, and teachers, and educators, and parents, and community members, we have an ability to model for our children. I've been a very longtime advocate speaker. I did a congressional luncheon event and speaker panel on digital citizenship. I think we have a problem with digital citizenship and how we're modeling to kids, but I am not a fan of Mark Zuckerberg, but his statement today, coming out and acknowledging that you need people of different backgrounds to be leaders in the community, is paramount. And nobody has all the answers, and nobody is right. And respecting that people have political differences, and political points of view that are different than your own, is just as much diversity respecting as anything else. And intolerance that's been exhibited in the greater Fairfax community for political endeavors needs to stop, because this is the environment that our children are growing up in, and we're teaching our children that there's intolerance in politics as well as everything else. And I look forward to an improvement on that in the future. Thank you.
Ms. Huff?
I'll pass, thank you.
Ms. Palchek.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Schultz prompted one of my announcements, just to make people aware that voter registration has been extended to tomorrow, so especially our students out there, if you hadn't had a chance to register to vote, you have one more day. I also will be having my second office hours, coming up on November 2nd, from 4:00 to 6:30 at Oakton Library. I mentioned it before, but I want to thank Dr. Garza again, and our whole team, who have brought Genesis Works here to our community. Going to the event, Ms. Huff was there, I got to bring my niece as well, was just so inspiring, and definitely shows the future of what we want our kids to be able to do. The other exciting thing is, I've had a chance to speak to a few Girl Scout troops about running for office. That's something I love, to inspire more girls to run for political office one day. And also Congressman Byer also had a women's conference, and I had a chance to talk about running for office, so I do hope this election, if nothing else, inspires more people in our community to take a chance to get involved in local, state, national politics, to make your voices heard, and to consider running and leading in our community. There are a couple of exciting things coming up. This Saturday, October 22nd, is Volunteer Fest here in Fairfax County. In Providence, there are a few nice opportunities, and one of them is a free educational pony ride for people of all ages at the Oakton Community Park. And I'm especially proud of our Oakton High School Chima Orchestra. They went through a rigorous competition, and they will be the only orchestra featured at the Virginia Music Educators Conference in November. They have their upcoming concert on October 27th. I look forward to being there, and hope you can join us. So, I do hope you have a restful rest of the week. I hope you register to vote, and I hope that we can continue to support our kids in our community. Thank you.
Ms. Hines.
Yes, yes, thank you. So, yesterday, I was out by Sunrise Valley Elementary School in Ruston, and they had a beautiful addition done, just finished this past year, very lovely. One of the things that was required, though, was that a new path be put in along the street, Cross School Road, and the neighbors woke up to a brand-new bear hillside, where there used to be woods, and they were not terribly happy about that, because it's a very woodsy neighborhood. So, yesterday, I witnessed a great solution to that challenge, and it was a group project put together by folks in FCPS, and I'm sure I have to thank Facilities folks, and Elaine Tolan, our Get to Green guru, but also Earth Sanga, which is a group out there in Fairfax County, and also Native Plant Design, and some students from South Lakes High School, who planted 1,500 plants on that hillside. I mean, it's very long, if you go and take a look at it. And these are native plants that will do well in our native conditions, which can be pretty harsh. And so, it was, I thought, just a wonderful, let's, you know, make lemonade out of what looked like lemon. And the neighbors helped too, and they were, they're very happy with the way it came out. I also did go to the varsity football game last Friday night between South Lakes High School and James Madison. Both teams were undefeated, 5-0. One of them was still undefeated at the end of the night, and that was South Lakes. So, either way, I win, because they're both my high schools, but that was very exciting. Both schools had great cheer squads, and it was very exciting. It was a really wonderful night of high school football. Also, last week, I attended South Lakes High School PTA meeting, where we saw the video, I Learn America, and if you haven't seen this, it's a documentary about a high school in New York that serves recently immigrated students. And so, they talked about the particular needs that they have, and I think it was really helpful for us in Fairfax County, because we have many students who come here in high school from other countries, and they do have particular needs. They bring a lot to the classroom and to our community, but so it was really, it was interesting to see it. And finally, Terrisette Elementary School, which, again, has just had a beautiful renovation and addition, and that is all open and beautiful, will have an open house on Saturday in the afternoon, and I'm looking forward to that.
And I want to say that I was very pleased to attend a meeting of Voice on Sunday with Ms. Hines. Thank you, Ms. Hines, for being there with me. This is a group of Northern Virginia clergy that are working for social justice, including affordable housing, and working against gun violence, and for education, especially preschool. And they had more than 1,000 people at Oakdale High School talking about these issues, so I appreciate the invitation and the opportunity to talk with so many people from the faith community at that meeting. I had a very fun evening with Troop 150, Boy Scout Troop 150, which meets at Annadale United Methodist Church. These were middle school and high school students from Glasgow Homes, Poe, Annadale High School Falls Church, and Stewart, and our topic was the Constitution and your constitutional rights. I was so impressed with these young men. I was trying to stump them with questions about the Bill of Rights, and about the Constitution, and they pretty much knew all of it, you know, they had the answer. So I was very, very impressed that they were already very well-versed, and so that was great to see. So I'm sure they will do very well on the badge that they're working on. And lastly, I'm looking forward very much to the annual Homecoming Parade at Stewart High School tomorrow night, and tomorrow afternoon, and with that, this meeting is adjourned. And I need to read to go into closed session. The Board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to, one, protect the privacy of individuals in personal matters not related to public business pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A4 of the Code of Virginia, to discuss and consider the performance of specific employees pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1, and, three, to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel regarding personnel matters pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7. Do I have a motion moved by Ms. Palchek? Do I have a second, seconded by Ms. Hines? All in favor, raise your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you.